Good evening. I would like to call to order the City Council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for May 11th, 2020. If you would please, there would be an American flag show up on the screen in just a moment. If you would please stand and join me as you are able for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
This meeting is being recorded.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll of the members? Janice Hoppy.
Present.
Judy Hutchinson.
Here.
Zachary Irvin.
Present.
Rachel Holteen.
Present.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Corey Steins.
Present.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
Valerie Nosler Beck.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, all members of the council are present. We have a quorum. Thank you very much. We have some proclamations and ceremonies tonight. And my first one is a proclamation for Police Week. If we have Chief Murtha on the line, there we are. Chief Murtha, thank you for joining us.
Appreciate it.
So this is a proclamation designating the week of May 10 through 16, 2020, as National Police Week and May 15, 2020, as National Police Officers Memorial Day. Whereas Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officer Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas the people of Colorado have shared the grief of the tragic death of El Paso County Sheriff John Hopkins, who contracted COVID-19 while on duty. And whereas it is important to recognize and honor the sacrifices made by those who were injured on the job or die in the line of duty. And whereas the members of the city of Wheat Ridge Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of all who work, play, and live in our city. And whereas the past few months created unique challenges for our community and increased risk for the men and women of the Wheat Ridge Police Department as we protected the health and safety of the department as well as the community in the face of the global COVID pandemic. And whereas it is important that everyone know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of our police department. And that, and that our local law enforcement agency recognizes their duty to serve our community by safeguarding life and property, by providing protection against violence and disorder, and by shielding the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression and intimidation. And whereas, over the course of the past 51 years, the Police Department of the city of Wheat Ridge has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency, which tirelessly provides a vital public service in partnership with the law-abiding members of our community. Now therefore, I Bud Starker, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, call upon those living and working in Wheat Ridge and upon our community, our community's patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 10 through 16, 2020, as National Police Week, honoring law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to our community. And in so doing, have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all members of the community. I further call upon our community to observe May 15, 2020, as National Police Officers Memorial Day, to honor those police officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives and who have been injured in the performance of their duty. Witness thereof, on this 11th day of May, 2020, Bud Starker, Mayor. So that's our, our proclamation for Police Week and, and the National Police Officers Memorial Day. Chief Murtha, do you have a couple of words for us?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much. It's a privilege and an honor anytime I get to represent the women and men of the Wheat Ridge Police Department and when they receive recognition. This year, for Police Officer Memorial Week, I think is a, is a time for us to reflect on, on our call to service, our duty, what it means to be a police officer. We're especially honored to work in the city of Wheat Ridge and to feel all the support that the residents, the political bodies shed towards the, the men and women who are working here. And it's an honor for me to lead that group tonight and to be able to sit here before you and accept that recognition. So as we look at the future and we look at the past, I'm so proud of what these folks have done in the face of the challenges of COVID-19 and all the other things that are going on around us. Your recognition tonight is just another cornerstone in the, in the wall of what we all believe is, is really one of the greatest parts of, of being part of Wheat Ridge and the city government and the city. So thank you so much. Thank you to all the members. I appreciate what your, what your proclamation says and what it means to the folks who work here every day and in the service of these folks who need our help on a daily basis. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chief, and I hope you will express to all of your officers on the force on behalf of myself and our, our city council and all of the citizens of Wheat Ridge that we, we truly appreciate your dedication and your service. And I know that we all stand willing to work shoulder to shoulder with you to provide safe communities in our city. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, our next, our next proclamation is in support of Mental Health Month. And we have joining us this evening Lindsey Reinert, who is a Community Outreach and Partnership Manager at Lutheran Medical Center and a member of Healthy Wheat Ridge Heal Committee, and Susan Anderson, our Parks and Recreation Facility Manager. And I want to welcome both of you to our virtual meeting. And I would like to read a proclamation for Mental Health Month, May 2020. Whereas good mental health is essential to the overall health and emotional well-being of all children, youth, adults, and families, and promotes a healthy community. And whereas one in five people in our communities experience a mental health condition each year. And whereas 8.1% of individuals in our communities experience substance abuse disorders each year. And whereas increased focus on the prevention of mental health conditions and substance use disorders among children and adolescents through screening and early intervention helps improve lives. And whereas the stigma against mental health conditions and substance use disorders prevents many people from accessing care. And whereas when mental health problems and substance use disorders are detected early and treated, people can recover and maintain a healthy and independent life. And whereas the city of Wheat Ridge is dedicated to improving the health and well-being of our community by ending stigma and focusing on the integrated role of mental health in our lives. Now therefore, I Bud Starker, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, do hereby proclaim May 2020 as Mental Health Month and call upon all residents and government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our communities and resources to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, providing appropriate and accessible services for all community members, and making mental health a priority. Dated this 11th day of May, 2020, Bud Starker, Mayor. So I would like to invite Lindsey and Susan. Lindsey, do you have any, any remarks that you'd like to make at this time?
Susan and I, on behalf of the Heal Committee here in Wheat Ridge, you know, a whole bunch of wonderful partners have been working hard at making sure that, you know, mental health and the issues that come with that are kind of at the forefront. And Susan and I were talking earlier about with the pandemic that's happening right now, it's now more important than ever because even more people are experiencing issues right now due to the social distancing, the isolation that's happening at home. So to draw more awareness about the issues that people are having, provide them with access to unique programs that are oftentimes free, such as Mental Health First Aid. The Jefferson Center has wonderful classes going on as well that are all free right now. So to be able to educate people about what they can do, how they can actively take care of themselves and the health and the mental health of their loved ones is really important. Susan, I don't know if you have anything else.
Well, thank you very much, Lindsey. Susie, please.
Okay, I was just gonna, thank you, Lindsey. You said it wonderfully. I did want to just add how much I appreciate the hard work of the Heal Committee and the partnerships that we have throughout the community with that program. And so thank you, Lindsey, for everything that you do. You work really hard on that committee and much appreciated.
Well, Susan and Lindsey, I want to thank you very much for being with us tonight. And I want to thank you and your team members at the Wheat Ridge Heal Committee for, for being there, for being there for our citizens. You know, this, this novel coronavirus has been a, been a stress, stressful event for all of us. I know it certainly has been for me and I think other, I speak for others as well. It's, it's very comforting to know that we have mental health resources of such a caliber in our community. And, and we appreciate very much your, your willingness to help, help our community heal in the times of need. So thank you very much and, and keep up the good work. Thank you. Okay, I have one more sort of special presentation. And I wish I could invite all of the graduates from the city of Wheat Ridge to be able to join us. Hopefully, and you know, I wish in person or on the, on the Zoom format, but they, but they cannot. But this is a proclamation in support of Wheat Ridge Graduates Week, May 11 through 17, 2020. Whereas Wheat Ridge is a special place with exceptional schools and residents who strive to improve the lives through education. And whereas many residents of Wheat Ridge have completed their studies and are due to graduate in 2020. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has significantly changed our lives, including the way we gather to celebrate accomplishments. And whereas the social distancing requirements due to COVID-19 pandemic necessitates that graduates and their families are unable to celebrate their accomplishment in the usual ways. And whereas many students have missed out on prom, trips, end of year concerts, award ceremony, graduation ceremonies and parties, and maybe senior skip day. And whereas approximately 250 seniors are due to graduate from Wheat Ridge High School this May. And whereas a number of kindergarten, eighth grade, college, trade, and technical school students are also due to graduate this year. And whereas the city of Wheat Ridge recognizes the dedication and hard work required to graduate, particularly during this challenging time when classroom instruction has been disrupted. Now therefore, I Bud Starker, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, along with all elected officials and city staff, do hereby congratulate all city of Wheat Ridge graduates and wish them well in their future endeavors. And I proclaim May 17, May 11 through 17, 2020, Wheat Ridge Graduates Week. Signed Bud Starker, Mayor. So I wish there were thunderous applause. I, I hope there is because thank you all for the, for the graduates that are out there. These are really, these are really tough times and I, and you know, these are experiences that I hope we all will remember for a long time and I hope we don't have to experience them again. But I, you know, these are unique times. And I think we, you know, if you see a graduate or able to do, to, to recognize their accomplishments and wish them well in the future. I hope we'll all take that and I, I sincerely do that. And thank you, thank you to all of our graduates. And we hope to see you around town. We're not able to get a little closer than six feet apart. So anyway, have a great summer and best, best wishes on whatever, wherever your path leads you in the future. So that concludes our proclamations and ceremonies. Let me get to my agenda and we'll go from there. Okay, we're going to go to Citizens' Right to Speak. Oh, no, wait a minute. We're not going to do that. We would normally go to Approval of the Minutes. We don't have any. We will go to Approval of the Agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda? Seeing none, we will proceed with the agenda as presented. We are now at Citizens' Right to Speak. Citizens may speak on any matter not on the agenda and regarding items. And they speak for three minutes. We're going to have any items not on the, not on the agenda during Citizens' Right to Speak. We will deal with other agenda items as they come up during the, during the course of the meeting. And the public will have an opportunity to speak on all of those at that time. So I am, all of the, the, I'm getting my script here. The public's microphones have been unmuted for now. If you are not speaking, please mute your telephone. I will invite members to, and members of the public to speak based on the first letter of your last name. When I come to your position in the alphabet, please speak up and ask to be recognized and I will recognize you to speak. When I ask, when I recognize you, please state clearly your first and last names. Please spell your last name and give your street address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Our mayor pro tem will start her timer when you, when you start. And after you've introduced yourself and before you start speaking, you may also raise your hand in the Zoom feature if you are joining us on the Zoom conference. And we will go through that. If I miss you while the alphabet, I'll go through the alphabet in about five segments. And if I miss you, then I will, we will have an opportunity at the end of the alphabet to go back and, and recognize anyone who has not had a chance to speak. So I will start. Is there anyone wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letter A through E? If you would please speak up and I will recognize you and you may speak. Anyone A through E of your last name. I don't hear anyone in that part of the alphabet. Is there anyone wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letter F through J? Please speak and I will recognize you.
Hello?
Yes, please, if you would introduce yourself, give us your address and you may, you may speak, please.
Yes, my name is Ihor Figless. I live at 9775 West 36th Avenue. And I see that on the agenda, there's, there are several hearings that are being scheduled for, for the future. One of the things that, I mean, has been talked about and it seems that the city has not provided any clear instructions on how to safely conduct any referendum that might come up as a result of some of these hearings. And I'll ever remind everybody that the referendum are an integral part of a hearing. Whether or not they happen, it just depends on the issue, but, but they are an integral part. And so if you're going to conduct a, a hearing, then you also need to provide the citizens with very clear instructions about how to safely conduct a referendum during this situation with the presence of the pandemic virus. You know, it makes it look like the city is, is not taking the safety of its citizens into account. Well, even though they're pushing forward with these, with these public hearings. It's been discussed here, but I think the city council needs to instruct the city staff to create a clear instruction about how these referenda can be conducted during this time of social distancing. And to make sure that the citizens' process, the citizens' right to, to do process is, is maintained and with the safety of the citizens in mind first and foremost. I mean, the safety of the citizens should be primary. And, and the referendum is part of the constitutional process. So those two need to be combined. And it seems that the city staff just hasn't gotten the message. And I would ask city council to provide a clear instruction to the city to come up with these, with a plan about how this can be conducted. In the meantime, I think those hearings should be postponed until such time as the city does come up with the plans. The plans can be, I mean, the instructions so that, so that all the process, all due process can be duly implemented. Let's see. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letter F through J? Please speak and I will recognize you and you may speak. Is there anyone wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letter K through O? Please indicate and I will recognize you to speak. K through O.
Yes, this is Zariana Marazovich.
Yes, please, please introduce yourself, give us your address and you may speak.
Sure. Zariana Marazovich, 3651 Ward Road. So I understand that it is council's desire to vote on new dates. Thank you, Janice. I see it. For the rezoning at 9800 West 38th from R1 to PRD and Clear Creek Crossing to allow somewhere in the vicinity of 135-foot building height with helicopters flying over my house. So I understand, I also understand that staff is pushing for both issues to be scheduled for the same evening on June 8th as a virtual hearing because of their safety and social distancing concerns. This might be helpful to staff and you as officials, but this does not take into consideration citizen concerns about their safety. Remember the little people who pay taxes, that pay staff and city council salaries? Us guys? I'd like city council to explain why it's okay for you to hold virtual meetings, but what about my safety and other citizens if I'm forced to collect thousands of signatures for a referendum? Shouldn't my safety and other citizens be primary concern? And what is the fire about getting this done during a pandemic? Other cities have suspended these kinds of hearings until meetings can be done safely and in person. So what this leads me to believe is that the developer, developer concerns who are not part of this community are more important to you as a council than the voice of the citizens who live here. Public hearings should be scheduled for in-person meetings in City Hall. If it's not safe to meet in public, then it's not safe to conduct a referendum. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letter K through O? If you would please speak up, I will recognize you to speak. K through O. Is there anyone wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letter P through T? Please speak and I will recognize you to speak.
Hello, my name is Corbin Travis. I, my address is 6910 West 25th Place. Lakewood, I go to Wheat Ridge schools and all that stuff, so yeah. I'm not quite sure what we came this for, with stuff. But I think that y'all have been doing great, so keep up what you've been doing. So, bye.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letter P through T? If you would please speak up, I'd be happy to recognize you and you may speak. P through T. Is there anyone in our audience wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letter U through Z? Please speak up and I will be happy to recognize you. U through Z. I don't hear anyone in U through Z, so I'm going to, is there anyone, anyone wishing to speak? It's Citizens' Right to Speak, whose last name begins with the letter A through Z. You may speak now. If you just asked to be recognized, I'd be happy to recognize you and you may speak. Okay, I, I don't hear any other Citizens' Right to Speak speakers, so we will close our Citizens' Right to Speak. And I thank you for your comments and for joining us tonight. And we will go on with our agenda. And we will go to our first agenda item. Ms. Weaver, would you please introduce agenda item number one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number one is a council bill number 062020, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 9800 West 38th Avenue from Residential 1, R1, to Planned Residential Development, PRD, with an outlined development plan, ODP. It is case number WZ-19-07.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, I understand we may have some additional late, late information on this.
Not necessarily on this one. That will be the later on, Mr. Mayor. This one, I'd like to turn it over to our city attorney, Mr. Dahl, just to explain why we are requesting that this item be postponed indefinitely.
Thank you. Mr. Dahl.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me? Am I, is the mic live here?
Excellent. Very good.
Counsel, you will recall at your last meeting that I asked you to postpone indefinitely a council bill 052020, which was, as you might recall, the second reading ordinance on the rezoning height change out at the post-hospital at Clear Creek Crossing. And at that meeting, I alerted you to the fact that, that there was another bill that I'd be asking you to postpone indefinitely. And we agreed that we would schedule that postponement motion for tonight. As counsel will recall, and I'll give you a short version of the background, I think more for the public than anyone else for these two postponements. Both of these particular projects and the one that's on your agenda for agenda item number one is the 9800 West 38th Avenue rezoning. Both of them are received planning commission review and first reading prior to us needing to go into virtual meeting territory as a result of the COVID pandemic. We were able to correct the improperly notice out, the posted, mailed, et cetera, notices for both of these, but the newspaper publication for the hearing was, was not sufficient. It was not able to be changed in time to reach the required number of days under the code and charter. And so for that reason, what I urge the council to do, and I appreciate your having done it on, on the first one, and I'm asking the same thing tonight, what the council agreed to do was simply postpone indefinitely that council bill and allow the introduction of a new council bill on the same subject tonight. In simple words, that means it's a do-over. It's start over at the council level. Now, both of these projects have also already received the review they need from the planning commission, so it doesn't go back that far, but it does go back to first reading on both council bills. You've done that already for the, the one on the hospital. And I'm asking that you take a motion to postpone indefinitely council bill 062020, which is the 9800 West 38th Avenue rezoning. You'll see later on your agenda tonight that both of those projects are back on with new council bill numbers for a first reading. And the hearing dates that are going to be set on both of those is set out for June 8th as a virtual meetings and you see them on both of them. I should let you know also that there was a protest filed on the 9800 West 38th Avenue rezoning, appropriately filed as allowed by the code section that you recently adopted on protests. And have set forth in some detail the process for that. That protest was rescinded by the person signing the protest. Got notice of that today. The planning department did call and confirm that the desire was to rescind that protest and that person has the right to do so. And so that has been done. Certainly anytime there's a rezoning pending, a protest may be filed or refiled. And certainly at any time up to the start of the second reading public hearing, a protest could be filed on the same project. It could be by the same person, different person. Your doors are open for that. And, and as no such protest is received, we'll follow the process that you set forth in your ordinance. That among other things, as you well know, triggers a potentially a three-quarters required majority to approve under the code. But of course, we're not there at the moment. We don't have a protest, but one could come in. So the bottom line here is I would ask that you take a motion similar to the one you took last meeting on this particular case and that motion is in your packet postponing indefinitely council bill 062020. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have, let's see, before I go to to count, it's questions from council, I'll go to the public. Are there any questions that I have from any members of the? uh to count, it's questions from council, I'll go to the public. Are there any questions uh that I have from any members of the public? Hearing none, I will um uh ask Ms. Weaver, uh, may I have a motion on this uh item number one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to postpone indefinitely council bill number zero-six twenty-two-ty an ordinance approving the rezoning of of property located at ninety-eight hundred West Thirty-Eighth Avenue for residential one to planned residential development with an outline development plan upon request of the city attorney.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Weaver, a second by Mr. Urban. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, uh, will a clerk please poll the council? All counselors in favor of this motion, please raise your hand so the clerk can see it and count them.
Mr. Mayor, the motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will move to agenda item number two. Uh, Ms. Hutchinson, would you please introduce agenda item number two?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, council bill number oh-eight dash twenty-two-ty an ordinance amending Article Two of Chapter Nine of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning smoking in public places. Do you want me to read the issue or?
If you would, please read the issue.
Uh, Article Two of Chapter Nine of the code is being amended to reflect changes to the state's smoking law upon which the city's previous ordinance was based.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And uh, Mr. Goff, do we have a staff report on this?
We do. I'll hand it back to uh city attorney Gerald Dahl.
Mr. Dahl.
Thank you very much. Uh, council, your most recent action on smoking, most recent significant action on the city's smoking ordinance was in twenty-fifteen. Uh, you'll see that this uh, the state legislature most recently adopted uh a new statute that tunes up the state's smoking regulations, requires those regulations to be uh enforced statewide, uh leaves a little bit of room for local uh action. But I will say that the city of Wheat Ridge has been careful to follow the lead of the state and and primarily, as you're well aware, the smoking ordinance. City level mirroring the state statute is one that that prohibits smoking in certain places and radii from entryways. Uh, the changes that have been made by the state legislature that are reflected here, and we've identified under background some of the significant changes to the city's smoking ordinance, which I highly recommend be be approved. Uh, since the city last worked on this, electronic smoking devices have have become even more prevalent. And the state legislature, they did pretty good work in defining electronic smoking devices and regulating them. And uh, those requirements have been now embedded in this proposed uh ordinance. The definition of smoking has been broadened to include electronic smoking devices. Uh, significantly, and this is always a matter of great interest locally, is well, what's the radius distance around uh an entryway where to a to a place or building where smoking is not permitted? That that uh that that you can't smoke, so that you can't just stand outside the doorway. You have to move further away. Uh, the radius previously was fifteen feet. State legislature has changed that to twenty-five feet. Uh, I want to be clear that the legislature and the council, in the bill which is attached in your packet, uh says that you you may not be less stringent than the state statute. You can be more stringent than the state statute. Uh, and on this subject, however, there's kind of an exception to the exception, if you will. The uh state legislature has said if your uh ordinance provided for fifteen feet prior to, I think, January the first twenty-nineteen, you may retain that. Uh, you know, that that dimension. And also if there was a building being built that was being built in January uh at the time the state legislature was adopting this bill, and that building got a C O or building permit approval consistent with your fifteen-foot or your lesser restriction, that building can remain if you're keeping your fifteen-foot restriction. And that restriction stays at fifteen feet. So I'm taking a long time to tell you that your fifteen-foot restriction was put in place in twenty-fifteen. So it was in place prior to the deadline in twenty-nineteen, the legislature established. So you do have the authority to uh be less stringent than the state law in this one respect. You can be more stringent than state law in almost every other respect. And you're welcome to suggest how that, I want that to happen. But I realize that the dimension around entryways is always of great interest. It's of great interest to the business community and the customers. Uh, so you presently are at fifteen feet. You can retain it at fifteen feet because you were there for twenty-nineteen. Um, or you could go up to twenty-five feet. Bill in front of you takes that distance up to twenty-five feet and makes it consistent with uh the state statute. There are some other general amendments that you see um that I'd be happy to answer specific questions on, but in in the main, there are some facilities, nursing homes, et cetera, that are added to places where smoking is not permitted. And in general, the restrictions are somewhat more restrictive, I think, based upon our increasing understanding of the health effects of secondhand smoke. So be happy to answer any questions, council, on that.
Thank you very much. Before I go to questions from council, I would like to open it up for questions from from the public. Is there a member of the public who would like to speak on agenda item number two? Uh, if you would like to speak, please unmute yourself and ask to be recognized, and I will be happy to recognize you and you may speak on this issue. Is there anyone wishing to speak? I don't hear anyone, so we will close the uh citizens' right to speak on this issue. Uh, and I will open it for questions from council of staff. Are there questions of council? Before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion, are there any questions of staff on the issue? I'm going to close the public hearing, and Ms. Hutchinson, a motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve council bill number oh-eight dash twenty-two-ty an ordinance amending Article Two of Chapter Nine of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning smoking in public places upon second reading, and that take effect fifteen days after final publication.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Mr. Urban. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, uh, will a clerk please poll the council? All those members in favor signify by raising your hand.
Mr. Mayor, the motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will go to agenda item number three, and Ms. Hoppe, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council bill number zero-nine dash two-zero-two-zero an ordinance amending Chapter Twenty-One of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning streets and sidewalks. At issue, Chapter Twenty-One of the Code of Laws entitled Streets and Sidewalks regulates all construction and operation activities and public rights of way and needs a comprehensive revision. Specifically, this chapter is in need of updating for the public work effort to address a series of issues raised by construction activities of various utilities. This ordinance modifies the Code of Laws accordingly and has incorporated suggested language from a model ordinance used as a base by many other Colorado municipalities.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance on second reading, number sixteen-ninety. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And uh, Mr. Goff, do we have a staff report on this?
We do. I'll turn it back to Mr. Dahl again, and we do have some staff from uh Public Works who's here to, if if you have additional questions.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Mr. Dahl, excuse me.
Thank, thank you very much. I'm delighted there's some Public Works staff because obviously it's not my my specialty, but I will tell you that I, Public Works staff and I spent uh several s- long sessions together grinding through every single section and subsection of Chapter Twenty-One. And I've worked with Chapter Twenty-One over many years for the city, and it's while uh it may be dull to a lot of people, it's enormously important. Cities' public rights of way uh are the way everyone gets around and that you can see how you get around, but what you can't see in the public rights of way are all of the utilities which use those rights of way. And they're massive, of course, and we we don't think about the fact that rights of way and other public properties owned by the city really are the conduits for all of the information and uh communication that we we have in addition to things like water and sewer, but there's electricity, et cetera, and telecom. And we have, of course, a wide range of utilities competing for the use of those rights of way. Because the city does not own or operate its own water and sewer systems, instead is served by special districts, that adds additional layers, and it's more than one special district for each of those uh functions that is in the city, and so there's a quite an overlaying of of use of the rights of way. And that's why this chapter is very important. It's used daily by the Pope's Department and all of the the utilities that have facilities in our rights of way. There are two major components to Chapter Twenty-One. Permits to do work in the right of way and permits to leave things there and to maintain facilities in the right of way. Permits to do work are largely uh focused on making certain that there's good traffic control, safety, that the uh facilities that are installed have the appropriate separation from other utilities, water being separated from sewer by the required number of feet, et cetera, and that they're buried in ways that if they need to be accessed later, there's the minimum of disturbance. Then there's the section later article in Chapter Twenty-One that provides for uh your ongoing permit to be in the right of way, and I think there's a five-year uh a a preliminary term on that, although that they those can be expanded and by franchise for uh Excel, for example, or often twenty years to maintain facilities in the in the right of way. So it's a little bit of a shift. You need two permits, one for all of the stuff you're gonna do when you're constructing it. And then a separate permit for keeping it there and and how that is accessed and and maintained, and both of those sections needed uh a good tune-up, and we have done that throughout the throughout the entire chapter. Uh, I should also say that by charter, the uh council is in charge of granting access to rights of way such that that you can revoke a right-of-way permit at any time. And that's important. It's a feature of many home world charters. Uh, the fact that you're in the right of way does not give you an unlimited right to be there uh forever, other than say for a utility franchise, but if you're in the right of way for another purpose, it can be revoked. Uh, you see use of rights of way often for uh commercial businesses like having a patio, whatever, out in the right of way on the sidewalk. You see them in Sixteenth Street Mall in Denver. All of those patios are in public property and are there at at the sufferance, really, of the city and county of Denver, as they should be because it's public property that at some point might need to be used for another purpose. And that's why we don't sell or grant unlimited uh rights to the use of public property. Uh, as I say, there's a lot of detail. It's mostly uh a concern of engineers and Public Works people and the people that make sure that when a right-of-way is being opened up for a project, it's opened up safely. There's good traffic control. It doesn't stay open any longer than it needs to. That it's closed up appropriately. Patch in the asphalt is such that it's not gonna sink or sag when you drive over and create a pothole. Uh, and that's continuous effort. Public Works Department has to 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 lean on contractors to make sure that that is appropriately done, and they're good at it, and I think we have a good set of people in this contractors generally that we work with in the city. Uh, so that's a real quick overview of the chapter. Lots of detail. We went through and looked at each section to improve it, make it uh easier to use, and I'll stop in just a second, but I'll tell you that one of the questions I asked as we went through each section was, does this section represent how you operate today? Uh, because in many cases, the the practice out there in the field had been modified and had changed, and and we wanted to make certain it matched up with how they uh operated today, and in each time I would say, have there been any problems with how this section has been applied? If so, let's fix those. And and so that's why I took a number of sessions, but we're very happy uh with the outcome. Any questions for me or hopefully for somebody like Mark Westburg, who's gonna answer them more capably than I?
Uh, thank you, Mr. uh, Mr. Dahl. Before I go to questions from council, I would like to uh open it up and questions from our citizens. Is there anyone online tonight who would like to um speak on this issue number three? Uh, if you do, uh, please uh speak up and I will recognize you and you may speak on this. Anyone from the public who would like to comment on agenda item number three? Okay, I don't hear anyone from the public, uh, so I will go from questions from council, and Mr. Urban had his hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this question is for Jared Dahl. The exemption section on page twenty-five indicates that the regional transportation district is exempt. Why are they exempt?
Draw me to the the code section, if you wouldn't mind.
One dash one-twenty-two.
Thank you. Hang on one second. I see Steve Nguyen is on the um on the phone. Um. They've had that exemption for some time. I think we work with them pretty regularly. Steve, do you wanna help me out for that? They're obviously, they're another public entity as opposed to a purely private entity, and city has the right to to um to uh lighten up on uh on public entities. I would expect that it's probably uh uh bus stops, turn lanes, et cetera. Steve?
Can I get a section on that? I guess that twenty-one dash one-twenty-one?
Twenty-one dash one-twenty-two, Steve. Pretty short section. Let me look at the existing code. Uh, yes, no change from the existing code on that, on that subject. I I gave you a red line that shows the whole raft of changes. Doesn't look like there was a change to the existing code on that one section.
Yeah, I I'm thinking that's pertaining to RTD. Uh, they are a dis- dis- transportation district.
Steve, maybe you could uh elaborate a little bit for council member Urban and what our daily working relationship is with with RTD. I will tell the council if if it's potentially a question, you have the right to require permits. The fact that it's the state doesn't mean that you can't require a permit other than perhaps on a state highway. I have some wishes with that. Uh, but Steve, what's our working relationship with RTD and what kinds of projects do they undertake in rights of way?
With RTD, mostly they uh plan and place uh bus stop locations. Um, those are the part of work that we don't issue permit because they have the rights to do. Um, so that's one portion of that. Uh, as far as call Department of Transportation, uh, their state highways coming through the city, uh, we don't regulate, we do require a permit, but most of the work is done at their designs.
And then um, as it relates to sections one-twenty-three and one-twenty-four, the, I guess, just section twenty-one dash one-twenty-four talks about courtesy benches. And would would those include bus benches or are those? Uh, cause it indicates bus stop, so how do we exclude RTD and then bring back in bus stops?
First off, RTD defines where the bus stop locations are at. And then the courtesy benches is a kind of a separate contract that uh the city uh works with uh private companies that place these benches location at the predetermined RTD locations. So don't, they just manage of bench installation and maintaining them, but they're not uh determine the location and uh other than RTD.
Let me add to that. I appreciate that that question. Uh, some years ago, I think it was in the, must have been in the late nineties even, the city was approached by a company that wanted to put advertising on uh bus shelters and and actually build the shelters and put the advertising where there was already a bus a bench. Uh, RTD was just doing, I think, just the bench or just the stop in some cases. And um the city put together a program that now is, this program, it's been evolved a number of times. Uh, and we've gone through a number of different companies, there's presently one. Uh, but that program, as Steve says, is exclusively to permit uh the location of courtesy benches and advertising, and in some cases, no advertising. That was very important. That was very important to the council when this program was initially put together, that certain zone districts should not be permitted to have advertising, primarily the residential districts. As you see, and I think the contract at the time, I don't say I have it under my elbow, but contract at the time required the company, if you're gonna, we're gonna permit you to have advertising on a certain number of shelters, you are required to provide shelters without advertising on a certain number of of bus stops in residential districts. Again, I don't have that contract. I'm happy to provide it to the council, but that was kind of the trade-off that I think was a good one. Council asked for when that courtesy bench program was initiated.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Additional questions from council? Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My questions, I think, are probably better suited for Steve Nguyen if he is available. And I read through several provisions looking at requirements for accommodating pedestrians should the sidewalks and rightways be obstructed due to construction. And I just, I have two questions. One, um, it was a little unclear to me from reading the language if the requirement to provide an alternate right-of-way for pedestrians is required if there's not a sidewalk. And I ask that because we have a lot of residential streets that don't actually have sidewalks, but that doesn't mean that there aren't still people who need to be walking through there. And a couple of times I've been walking around our neighborhoods, and I haven't been able to get through because there's construction. So I just wanna know if there's any clarification or any general requirement that Public Works has for providing those accommodations in the event there's not a designated sidewalk.
For that particular question, typically, we would require alternative pedestrian walk if the construction happened to obstruct that path. For example, if you at a street sidewalk, would probably have them detour to a certain intersection to cross to onto another path. Or in other locations where there is no sidewalk, we typically require where it's a suitable space for for pedestrian. So each case tend to be different. We do have a provision, make sure that the bike path or the pedestrian path is provided for as a detour when there's a construction impeding it.
Thank you. And then my other question, so in section twenty-one sixty, item number nine, there is, sorry, I'm trying to go back and forth between my computers here. It says, "Traffic-controlled devices shall not be placed on sidewalks or other areas where they would block pedestrian access, nor at intersection corners where they block sightlines." That that triggered me, and I don't know where this goes in here, but oftentimes the signage for the work that's being done actually becomes an obstruction itself, and I realize that that's that's not avoidable. However, the the redirection is oftentimes oriented around the construction and not where that signage is. So a lot of times signs are put in the sidewalk, warning of the upcoming construction, but sometimes the workaround for the pedestrians isn't until after that sign. I don't know if that's making sense. I've run into that a couple of times, and I and I see it kind of somewhat regularly. So I just wanna recognize that a lot of times the signage itself becomes an obstruction, not just the work. And is that something that your department reviews and the permits?
Yes, we typically do, I think. And and I seen it too several times is that they typically put them on the sidewalk, and typically we would have them put outside of sidewalk within the landscape area. That's what we do for it. I think it's more for us to check through each of those point prior to the work just to work with them to make sure that they have their sign outside of the sidewalk whenever possible. And typically, you know, they have enough room behind the sidewalk within the landscape area where we have and place those signs. But there will be a few occasions where they don't have enough room, and then we try to make the best of it and make sure we still have a passage wait for the pedestrian.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions from council staff? Before I close the hearing, are there any additional questions for council or staff? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Ms. Hoppy, a motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the council bill number of zero-nine dash two-zero-two-zero in ordinance amending chapter twenty-one of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning streets and sidewalks on second reading, and that it take effect immediately upon adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll your council? Will council raise your hands if you are in favor of the motion?
Mr. Mayor, the motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will go to agenda item number four. Ms. Hulteen, would you please introduce agenda item number four?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Agenda item number four is resolution number twenty-seven dash twenty, a resolution approving an enhanced sales tax improvement program agreement with Grammy's goodies in the amount not to exceed seventy thousand dollars or for five years, whichever shall occur first. At issue, the city of Wheat Ridge received a request from Jeff and Vicky Quarter, or owners of Grammy's goodies, Grammys, to enter into the enhanced sales tax incentive program for the rebate of sales tax increment increment in association with a proposed model and I'm sorry, and a proposed remodel in addition of an enclosed patio to their restaurant located at forty-six oh one North Harland Street in Wheat Ridge. The rebate would be for fifty percent, one point five cents of city incremental sales tax generated for a period of five years or a total not to exceed an amount of seventy thousand dollars.
Thank you very much. This is a resolution. It is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Goff, do we have a staff report on this issue?
We do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our economic development manager, Steve Arch, should be on the line.
Mr. Art, please unmute.
I apologize. I thought I had unmuted. Thank you.
There you are. You're good to go.
Hey, thank you. So let me talk to you about the enhanced sales tax program, or as we call it in the city, S-Step. S-Step encourages support and the expansion of sales tax generating businesses within the city of Wheat Ridge. And we feel by providing this incentives, it stimulates the local economy through additional employment, increased sales tax, as well as providing aesthetic improvements in the city of Wheat Ridge. The S-Step provides for public-related improvements at no cost to the taxpayers. That is, Grammy only receives a rebate upon the sales tax that's generated by this specific business. So how does the S-Step work? Well, once we enter into the agreement and they they complete the improvements, we will look back after they receive their condition of occupancy, their final inspection on it. We will look back at the previous twelve months to define the base level of the sales tax. And upon this calculation, any additional sales tax that's created created above that base level is considered enhanced sales tax. And that is what will be rebated back to Grammys on an annual basis. So what do they need this request for? What necessitated this request? So Grammys, a few months ago, was recently featured on diners, drive-ins, and dives. And this feature really increased their business drastically. Currently, Grammys is in a building that measures about two thousand square feet and seats about twenty-four people. Most of the square footage in that two thousand square feet is devoted to kitchen and storage. This S-Step will allow them to expand the seating area by six hundred square feet by enclosing the current patio area. And this increase will also allow for forty more people to sit in the restaurant. It will add additional kitchen space, and it will create more landscaping and create more parking. A little background on Grammys. Grammys has been operating for seventeen years in Jefferson County. The last five years of that, they had a physical storefront in Wheat Ridge on Harlan. Co-owner Vicky Quarter grew up in Wheat Ridge and graduated from Wheat Ridge High School and has raised all of her family here in Wheat Ridge. Prior to the feature of diners, drive-ins, and dives, Grammy employed eight full-time staff. With the increased business from the show, Grammys has created four more full-time employees and three more part-time jobs. So the upgrades will bring construction jobs to the city as well as new permanent employment within the restaurant. So what is the need for this S-Step? Well, the expansion improvement costs are approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Seventy thousand dollars will be from the S-Step that will fund this project. And the remaining eighty thousand dollars of construction will be supplemented by private equity, a bank loan, family members' loan, and a twenty thousand dollar loan from the Wheat Ridge Business District. We feel this is a great project because during complete, during the project and upon completion, it will create future sales tax revenues. It will make the continuation of permanent good-paying jobs in the city. It will provide construction-related jobs and economic activity to the neighborhood during the construction period. It will support a Wheat Ridge small-based business. It's something that I know council is very interested in that in. And again, this project, it conforms to the city's comprehensive plan. So the city council was informed of this request for the S-Step at their March sixteenth, twenty-twenty study session and provided as a consensus to draft the agreement that's included in the packet. So what does this mean financially to the city? Well, the improvements are projected to increase sales by about twenty thousand dollar annually. The city will retain fifty percent of that, ten thousand dollars, and fifty percent will be shared back with Grammys to assist in paying for these public improvements, understanding we're not paying for dishes, air-conditioning units. We're paying for public improvements only. That's my report for tonight, and I wanted to let you know that Vicky Quarter, the owner of Grammys, is on the Zoom call and would be happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you very much, Mayor and members of the council.
Thank you. Before I go to questions of council, I would like to open this up to any comments from the public. Is there anyone from the public on tonight's meeting who would like to speak on this issue? You may, if you ask me recognized, I would be happy to recognize you. Any member of the public who would like to to speak on this issue? Okay, I don't hear anyone from the public desiring to speak, so I will open this up to council for questions. Are there questions of council of for Mr. Art or the applicant on this project? Any questions before I close the public hearing? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Ms. Hulteen, a motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve resolution number twenty-seven dash twenty-twenty, a resolution approving an enhanced sales tax improvement program agreement with Grammy's goodies in the amount not to exceed seventy thousand dollars or for five years, whichever shall occur first.
Okay.
There's a motion and a second by Mr. Urban. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand.
Mr. Mayor, the motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you so much. Now, thank you, Ms. Quarter, for joining us tonight. Okay, we will go to agenda item number five. Mr. Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, just pulling it up. Item number five, council bill number ten dash twenty-twenty, an ordinance approving an amendment to the existing planned mixed-use development, PMUD, zoning to increase the allowable height for hospital uses at Clerk Creek Crossing, case number WZ dash nineteen dash ten. The applicant is requesting to modify the underlying zoning to increase the allowable height for hospital uses. A hospital has already permitted use in the existing zoning, and the existing zoning also contemplated six-story employment uses. However, a hospital built to six stories requires an additional twelve feet of height to meet design requirements and current building codes. The applicant is also seeking a limited additional height allowance to accommodate a rooftop elevator associated with a helipad. Staff is recommending the public hearing be set for June eighth in a virtual meeting format. It is reasonable to assume that there will be still limitations on the size of in-person gatherings at that time.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the time, date, and location for the public hearing. Is a motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve council bill number ten dash twenty-twenty, an ordinance approving an amendment to the existing planned mixed-use development, PMUD, zoning to increase the allowable height for hospital uses at Clerk Creek Crossing. On first reading, for the sole purpose of ordering published for the public hearing set for Monday, June eighth, twenty-twenty at seven P M as a virtual meeting, and if adopted, it will take effect fifteen days after final publication.
There's a motion and a second by Ms. Hoppy. Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand this being a first reading, we don't generally have discussion, but since we're setting a date for a public hearing, has there been any update regarding the ability of citizens to pass a referendum or petition in relation to any ordinance or public hearing?
Yes, or Mr. Dahl?
Mr. Dahl, I think, has an update on that.
The, I can, I can tell you this, there's one some movement, the Supreme Court recently, this, I guess, last week held that strict compliance is still required for state laws requiring number of signatures on a petition regardless of the challenges that COVID-nineteen presents. Having said that, the Secretary of State and the governor have have issued guidance moving back in time, meaning delaying the period during which signatures can be gathered or must be gathered for some state offices for the for the November election. They have not promulgated, there has not been promulgated specific guidance from the Secretary of State's office on any kind of delay for signatures on local initiative or referendum petitions. I expect that based upon this Supreme Court decision, the, you know, strict compliance is still required for a state law. Absent changes from the legislature, what the most we might get from the Secretary of State's office is some guidance around protocols that can be followed or should be followed by petition circulators. But if I'm reading the case description properly, there is not on the horizon any kind of full-blown virtual petition process. That's not on the on the horizon, or I think in the in the cards to substitute for the actual collecting of signatures, and whether that means the state Secretary of State's office is going to promulgate regulations that require you to bring a supply of pens, brand-new pens with you, things like that, and and provide some kind of guidance on how you require signatures with social distancing. It's not impossible. Obviously, it's more difficult. I think the Secretary of State's moving in the direction of trying to give us guidance there. But I guess the key point I would make is that the Secretary of State, of course, doesn't have the power to change the forty-five-day requirement for referendum in cities charter. And I believe that based upon the Supreme Court decision, which I confess I haven't read yet, I just learned about this this afternoon and read the summary, but based on that decision, I don't see Supreme Court waiving the personal signature of a referendum petition requirement. There may be some allowed protocols around how you can more safely acquire signatures. But I think that that result will be signatures still required, forty-five-day period still in effect, obviously, because they can't change that local charter. As I promised council in the last couple of meetings, I will continue to 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 keep you informed what those developments are primarily at the state level, so that as you move toward, if you do approving items that would be subject to referendum, I can I can give you the latest information as of that time. Things clearly are continuing to evolve weekly on that subject, and I expect I'll always have something more to tell you, as I did as I did tonight. So good news, bad news for.
Thank you for that. And as we move forward towards the hearing date for this hearing and for other hearings, I would generally prefer that we lean towards the Secretary of State's guidance or other statewide guidance regarding these maneuvers and these processes as opposed to us and city staff devising our own mechanisms to do so for for basic standard purposes. I think it's better to lean on whatever the state's gonna do as opposed to us trying to come up with something. So I hope that the state has something pulled together by the time this hearing occurs.
I will absolutely, I think that's the right approach, and I'll absolutely keep close touch. If I have to reach out to them more directly, I will. So that each each meeting, I can give you an update on what they're requiring.
Thank you.
Mr. Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Dahl, as we move towards that date,
if that changes and the Secretary of State says, you know, there is no possible way to do a referendum or whatever it is, is that something then we would have to go and push that out further at that point? The, that hearing?
Well, you, yes, a couple of things. If the Secretary of State says for some reason, well, we've now decided that you can't safely circulate petitions, and we're going to issue guidance somehow that gives the city the right to not accept petitions, which would be pretty extreme, frankly. Then, 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 yes, I think it much more likely that there will be guidance on how to do it. That, that if, then it becomes a local decision, not whether you're going to change the guidance, as Councilmember Urban indicated, I think the guidance, the protocols would remain the same. You will have a policy decision to make that I think I've alerted you before a couple of meetings ago, which is that you could conceivably, if you wish, close the hearing, take the testimony, continue the matter for action. Because of course, the forty-five days for referendum does not begin to run under the charter until you have finally approved the ordinance, which is the vote on, in this case, a rezoning ordinance, not the close of the hearing and not the effective date of the ordinance. So the date, it's the date you vote, and you could, and council has done this in the past, they've closed hearings. So thank you very much, we're going to continue this for action only. No more testimony, no ex parte contacts to a date into the future. So that will be an option that you have before you want you to, no question. Now, whether or not the Secretary of State's done anything, it's still within your power if there are the votes to support it, to close the hearing and continue it for action.
Do you know what some of the other cities around us are doing? I've, I've heard other cities have not done public hearings for rezoning, things like that?
Both things have happened. The Attorney's List Service has been pretty active, and I've been watching it carefully. There, the county and I think some of the municipalities in El Paso County have been moving forward with presidential zoning land use cases without delay. Other cities have chosen to postpone action on land use cases for the time being, and post a temporary moratoria on, on processing of those cases. So both things have happened, and cities are in the middle as well, as in Sweet Ridge, which is that they've, they've been conducting public hearings virtually, making them as accessible to the public as possible in the various ways we've now gotten, I think, pretty good at, both, both virtually and in person. But, but they haven't, they have, they progressed ahead. I don't think that there's a majority on any side of that council. I think there's a wide range in the communities that, many communities are moving ahead and many communities are not.
Actually, there was a survey done recently by Brownstein Hyatt Farber Law Firm, and they, they reached out to, I think, thirty-four different municipalities, and I think seventy percent of those are still moving forward in some format. They may be holding some public hearings back, but seventy, seventy percent of the thirty-four are moving forward in some format on public hearings.
Okay. Can I ask, Ms. Hoppy?
Sorry, Ms. Mayor.
I'm sorry, you still have another one, Mr. Stites?
Sorry, Ms. Mayor. My last question would be, I guess, maybe to the, to the counselors and Ms. Hoppy and everybody. These virtual meetings tend to take, they seem like they take a little bit longer, and, and the public process is a little bit more, I don't know, challenging for some, I guess. What if we didn't continue all of these hearings to the same day? So if we're still going to be doing them virtually, what if we did them in a couple of weeks? So we didn't do all three or whatever it is on the same day. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppy?
Actually, Mr. Dahl went, covered what I was going to ask, which was about continuing for action.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Will the clerk please poll the council? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand.
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will go to agenda item number six. Ms. Weaver, would you please introduce agenda item number six?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Council Bill number eleven twenty twenty, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at ninety-eight hundred West Thirty-Eighth Avenue from residential one to planned residential development with an outline development plan. This is case number WZ nineteen oh seven slash Hardy. At issue, the applicant is requesting approval of a zone change from residential one to planned residential development with an outline development plan for the property located at ninety-eight hundred West Thirty-Eighth Avenue, the southeast corner of West Thirty-Eighth and Johnson Street. The purpose of this request is to prepare the property for the development of four single family homes and three duplexes for a total of ten dwelling units. Staff is recommending the public hearing be set for June eighth in a virtual meeting format. It is reasonable to assume that there will still be limitations on the size of in-person gatherings at that time. A zone change protest has already been received and validated based on the timing of the receipt of the protest. It does not impact the scheduling of the hearing, however, it does change the voting rules whereby a super majority vote of council will be required to approve the ordinance on second reading.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance on first reading, so to set the date, time, and location for the public hearing. Mr. Dahl, I understand we, or Mr. Goff, I understand we've had some additional information on this. Would you please bring that forth?
Yeah, Mr. Dahl can handle, he, he did just cover this under agenda item number one. The political, or the political, the protest was withdrawn on this case, and it's, so at this point, there is no legal protest on this case. We could receive a protest up until the start of the public hearing on June eighth, so doesn't mean we won't have one, but at this point, there is no legal protest on this case.
That's correct, and, and because the rescission of the protest just came in, we obviously did not have time to change the description on the issue and set poor Councilwoman Weaver up to, to, to read it, and, and I apologize for not alluding you to the fact, Councilmember Weaver, that that had taken place today. So it's, right now, there is no protest, but as Mr. Goff indicates, our doors are open to receive one if one does come in.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver, may I have a motion on agenda item number six?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I move to approve Council Bill number eleven dash twenty twenty, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at ninety-eight hundred West Thirty-Eighth Avenue from residential one to planned residential development with an outline development plan on first reading for the sole purpose of ordering it published for a public hearing set for Monday, June eighth, twenty twenty at seven P M. As a virtual meeting, and if adopted, it will take effect fifteen days after final publication.
Second, we have a motion and a second by Mr. Urban. Is there discussion on the motion? Ms. Hoppy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once my perspective brings up a good point, and it's something that I've noticed not just with our online meetings, but every online meeting I've been on, there's like a multiplier, like a one to a one point five. So I would like to make an amendment to this motion to amend that we set the public hearing for Monday, June twenty-second at seven P M., which would be the next business meeting after June eighth, so that we can take, take them one at a time.
Second, I have a, an amended motion with a second by Mr. Stites. Is there discussion on the amendment, and I will go to Mr. Dahl?
I just want to confirm, Councilmember Hoppy, did your motion include that the meeting would, the hearing would be a virtual meeting or not? So that we'll, we know, we'll know how to publish the notices.
It would be a virtual meeting.
Yep, everything the same except for the date.
Thank you.
Okay, let us go to a vote on amendment number one to change the date of the public hearing. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand, and the clerk will record your votes.
Mr. Mayor, the amendment has passed.
Thank you. We will go back to the main motion, and so the main motion has amended. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the votes? All those in favor of the amended motion, please raise your hand.
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will now go to agenda item number seven. Ms. Nosler Beck, would you please introduce this item?
Thanks, Mayor. Motion to approve appointment of representatives to the twenty twenty-one Outside Agency Program Committee. At issue, the purpose of creating the twenty twenty-one Outside Agency Program Committee is to provide an additional opportunity for citizens to participate in the budget process. This committee gives citizens the opportunity to weigh community needs with the available resources and provide recommendations to city council.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
Mary Ann Schilling is available if you have any questions.
Okay, then I will have a report on this right now, but I will open this up to members of the public. If you wish to make a comment on agenda item number seven, you may do so now. If you would please unmute your listening device and, and ask to be recognized, I'm happy to recognize you, and you may speak. Anyone would like to speak on this item? I don't hear anyone, so I will open this up to questions from council on this item. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is relative to the deadline of May fourth, and I wanted to inquire as to what the response rate was from previous applicants or new applicants, and given this current environment, people might be somewhat distracted and just want to see what the response, response rate was.
Are you asking for the total response rate for the funding applications or for the committee member applications?
I'm sorry, for the, for the, for the grant, grantees, the nonprofits, the.
The nonprofits, it's actually pretty similar to the years past. It was a hundred and eighty-six thousand. I want to say last year's was about a hundred and eighty-three thousand, so very close.
Is that the same number of organizations or?
We had four additional applicants.
Thank you.
Any additional questions of staff on this item? Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just need a clarification, because two of the members are extending their terms. Do we need to actually appoint that extension? Or is that covered in the, the, the motion that's, that's been presented?
Mary Ann and I spoke about that, and we don't, this committee really doesn't have any bylaws that addresses that. So we typically, and maybe Mr. Dahl can speak to this too, but I think typically committee members or even council members are, maintain their seats until a new person's appointed. So we decided just to appoint the two new ones, and the ones that are staying on are not, don't need to be reappointed at this time. Absent any specific bylaws that say anything different, that's the way we decided to do this.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, Ms. Nosler Beck, a motion is in order.
All right, I move to appoint Jerry DeTulio and Genevieve Woodin to the twenty twenty-one Outside Agency Program Committee in Districts One and District Four. The term to expire after twenty twenty-two budget recommendations are presented in twenty twenty-one.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Ms. Dozeman. Is there discussion on the motion? Ms. Hoppy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you very much to Jerry DeTulio and Genevieve Woodin. I actually, I think they're really great additions to this team. Genevieve used to be a city councilor for us here in Wheat Ridge, and then Jerry DeTulio being the county treasurer, and so I appreciate them stepping up and stepping into this role. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand.
Motion has passed unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. We will move to agenda item number eight. Ms. Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Resolution twenty-nine dash twenty twenty, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Jefferson County for CARES Act local government distributions. At issue, the coronavirus aid relief and economic security CARES Act was signed into law on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. This two point three trillion economic relief package provides economic assistance for American workers and families, small businesses, and preserves jobs for American industries. The CARES Act established the hundred and fifty billion dollar coronavirus relief fund to provide payments to state, local, and tribal governments navigating the impact of the COVID nineteen outbreak. Only local governments with populations that exceed five hundred thousand are eligible to receive direct payments from the relief fund. Jefferson County's population exceeds five hundred thousand, and the county received approximately a hundred and one million dollars in funding, a portion of which the county desires to share with municipalities in Jefferson County. This IGA outlines obligations of the City of Wheat Ridge in receiving these funds.
Thank you very much. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this one?
I might add just a little bit more to that. The issue statement is, is pretty clear, I think, and I've been updating city council on this over the last couple of weeks. And the good news is the county did receive their funding. So the state of Colorado received two point two three billion from the CARES Act, and they are sharing forty-five percent of that with the jurisdictions that have populations of five hundred thousand or more. So Jefferson County got forty-five percent of, based on their population, and Jefferson County is using that same distribution formula to share that, those amounts with the cities in Jefferson County. So we're getting forty-five percent of what the county got based on our population. So it's, I think, I think it's in the memo. I can't remember how much it was per person, and we were seventy-three dollars, I think, maybe per person, so the City of Wheat Ridge is getting about two point five million dollars. The Board of County Commissioners decided to give us the city fifty percent of that amount. Once this IGA is approved, we should get the money within a ten day period. They promised they would actually turn that around in probably a couple of days, so we should get it by the end of this week. The remaining fifty percent we'll get when we submit a spending plan to the Jefferson, to Jefferson County on how we would like to spend the remaining money that the county is going to give us. So, and just a point of, of not clarification, but just a point I'd like to make too. The county was not required to share any of this money with, with the cities. That was not part of the CARES Act, but they are, which was great, and they understand that we, as a city, have many expenses also. So that's good news, but they are responsible in the end for making sure that the monies are, are spent according to the CARES Act, and they're somewhat limited. They essentially have to be used only for necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency with respect to COVID nineteen, for any expenses that were not accounted for in the budget most recently adopted, so our two thousand twenty budget, and were incurred between March first and the end of this year. So these are the only federal funds at this point that we are aware of, that the City of Wheat Ridge is going to receive, and they need to be spent by the end of the year, and they need to last us through the end of the year. So I think that's about it. This IGA again is, is just, lays out the obligations that the city must meet to receive these funds and the reporting requirements that we have to report back to the, to the county to track the funding and the spending of funding.
Thank you. Before we go to questions from council, I will open this up to questions from the public. If there's any members of the public who would like to, to comment on this item, you may do so now. If you would please just ask to be recognized, we will recognize you, and you may speak. I don't, I don't hear anyone. Bless you. Okay, so we will close our public comment on this item and open it up to questions from council for staff. Is, are there any questions for Mr. Goff on this issue? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Dozeman, may we have a motion on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution number twenty-nine dash twenty twenty, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Jefferson County.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 29-2020, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Jefferson County for CARES Act local government distributions.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Mr. Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing not, will the clerk please poll the council? All those in favor, please signify by saying by raising your hand.
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will go to agenda item number nine. Mr. Urban. Would you please introduce agenda item number nine?
Resolution 28-2020, a resolution mending the fiscal year 2020 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $250,000 for the purpose of funding Phase Two of the Business Stabilization Program. At issue, the impact of COVID-19 on American businesses has increased dramatically over the last two months as state and local government order mandate mandatory shutdowns and shelter emplace orders further complicating operations for businesses already impacted by COVID-19. The city has recently distributed $250,000 in grants to 99 Wheat Ridge businesses through the Business Stabilization Program. The city will receive federal funding from the CARES Act through Jefferson County, which is authorized to be used for business recovery grant programs. This federal funding will enable the city will enable the city to provide an additional $250,000 for Phase Two of the Business Stabilization Program.
Thank you very much. Mr. Goff, is there a staff presentation on this issue?
Nothing really, more than I said on the last item and what Mr. Urban said. We were happy that we received direction and guidance from the U.S. Treasury Department that we can use this funding for for these business grant programs. I would recommend that we keep it at 250,000 for now. As I mentioned earlier, we don't know if we're going to receive any more federal funding at this point. Hopefully, we will, but if we do, and when we get a better picture on our revenues for the rest of the year, I think we definitely could consider a potential third round of some type of assistance to our community. At this point, though, I think it would be prudent to stick with 250.
Thank you very much. Before I go to questions from council, I will open this up to comments from the public. Is there anyone, a member of the public, who would like to comment on on this agenda item number nine? You may do so now. Just unmute yourself and speak up, and I will recognize you. I don't. Is there anyone that would like to speak from the public? I don't hear anyone now, so we will close our public comment portion and open this up to questions from council of staff. Are there any questions that the council has of staff? Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This may not necessarily be something that we need to contemplate this evening, but one thing that I thought of over the past few days is ensuring that as we dole out these grant funds that we ensure that the businesses that are the recipients of these funds are adherent to the public health orders and that we may consider down the road installing some sort of requirement that should a business be in violation of a public health order, either errantly or willfully, it doesn't really matter. I just want to make sure that we're not in a situation where we are supporting an entity that is in lawful violation of the public health order.
Thank you. Are there any further questions or Ms. Nosler Beck?
This is a question for council member Urban and for Steve. Just if we're going into a phase two on this, are there any lessons learned from what we had in terms of criteria for the last round? Or businesses that were just on the on the cusp that wouldn't potentially be eligible and will will allow to use those same applications? We could just talk through a little bit of that.
I'll defer to Steve, and then I'll follow up.
Oh, yeah, changes to the program that we think, obviously, we mentioned last time about the business license. So I think what we recommend this time around is prior to funding, you will have had to receive your business license to allow those who weren't even aware of a business license to apply, get active, get caught up for the years that they didn't have one. Judging wise, you know, went went pretty good. I think a few minor little tweaks, improvements to the application. I think asking more specifically how will you utilize these funds within your business? I think it went pretty smooth. The spreadsheet can be picked up. Chris Miller, the treasurer, has agreed to design a foolproof Excel spreadsheet that we can use. Mr. Urban, any other tweaks? I like your idea of the health code.
I think that a requirement on the health code is a good one, the ability to understand better how the applicant is going to use the funds. And as we're going through the applicants, one thing that I learned is it's difficult to ascertain that a mechanic is not a grant writer, and so having that understanding when we're going through these applicants that they're in the middle of trying to keep their business afloat, and someone who's a grant writer might present a really great application, and someone who's a mechanic is not going to do that. So it does take a bit of discretion on the part of the reviewers to go through this and give people the benefit of the doubt as we go through this, and that's the scoring mechanism that we use to go through this and make sure that not just one person is reviewing this. We have, I think, what is it, seven? Steve, is there? We have seven reviewers, and then the average of those scores get pulled together, and that's how we determine the amount. So we're right now working with the task force members to see if there's any additional lessons learned that they would like to see move forward. But that business license issue did come up as we went through this. There were several people who didn't have a business license, but then kind of crept through, so we want to make crystal clear that that nobody that doesn't have business license receives funding. And to be clear, no one during the first round who didn't have business license, they didn't receive any funding, but we just want to make sure that as we're reviewing the applicants, that we're only reviewing those that are either applied for a license or currently have a business license. And then the other thing that we learned was trying to ascertain their length of business in the City of Wheat Ridge. So someone may have been in business for 25 years, but they just moved to Wheat Ridge three months ago. And so making sure that when we ask the question of how long have you been in business, it needs to say how long have you been in business in the City of Wheat Ridge, which speaks to their viability as a business moving forward.
And and are we expecting to give people like people who applied and received funds in the first round, would they be eligible for a second round of funding? And maybe that's a conversation to have down the road.
What we had contemplated in the first round is if there was a second round, we would we would encourage those who did not receive the full 5,000 to apply for up to that 5,000. So if they received 1,000 or 4,000, then they would, you know, be able to apply for that remainder. The one question that is still out there is there was a subset of applicants that were booth renters of various ilk, and so you might have had a hairstylist who you know, was renting a booth, and so we allocated those individuals a $500 grant because we didn't we didn't see the need for them to receive a full $5,000. And so we're going to have to look at those again and see, you know, do those same applicants, you know, are they eligible, or will we need to limit that again to a $500 amount? And we had kind of worked through some of that.
Thanks. Well, I just I just also wanted to say great job on this because we we set up a program that made it so that we're not only have we gotten the dollars out the door to the businesses that need it, but we're qualifying, and we've met all the thresholds that the federal government usually sets up that are hard to meet. And so we are we are agile and dynamic in a time when rigidness usually paralyzes communities. So congratulations, you guys. This is really awesome.
And we also identified approximately 50 businesses that never had a business license in the community and now have active business.
Yeah, and that was a side effect we didn't anticipate.
Thank you, Mr. Stites, and then Ms. Weaver, and then Ms. Hulte.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, Ms. Nosler Beck asked my question. Mr. Urban answered it perfectly. It's a great program. Thank you, guys. We appreciate all your hard work.
And we'll move to Ms. Weaver.
Mr. Urban, I was just curious if you needed an amendment on this for those safety procedures, or if you feel like the the committee is fine in creating those through the committee process.
Mr. Mayor, I would I would say that right now I don't have the right language to ask for that, and I think under the current auspices of the structure of the program, that the city manager has that authority to devise those requirements, and so I don't want to throw anything out there without having it properly vetted, and it just sort of came to me today as I was watching the news, so I don't want to.
Well, it sounds like we're all in agreement, at least from the head nodding I saw, but but I do want to voice my support. I think that's a great idea.
Thank you, Ms. Hulte.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo everyone else just impressed at how quickly and efficiently that this has been rolled out, and I was really excited to see that there's a second round that we're able to offer our businesses. Two things. One, this is kind of a, it's a it's a little bit of a paradox. I love that we're quick and we got that first round out really quickly. For the second round, I know that there were great businesses that didn't hear about it because we didn't really have enough promotion time to get it out there. I know our partners that are part of the committee were notifying their members, but I'd like to make sure that for the second round, we do have enough time to really you know, do as many outreach activities as we can so that businesses are aware of it and can find out about it with enough time to apply. So if that's one consideration that the committee could look at is just adequate outreach, I think that would be appreciated. And then I just want to run my support. I fully support council member Urban's suggestion and and as well as, you know, looking at some of the lessons learned. So I'm excited to hear the committee's doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions before we go to a motion? Okay, Mr. Urban, may I have a motion? Have something further that you wanted to?
Yeah, to councilor Hulte's concern or desire to push this out further. I think the fact that we have the 99 business owners presently being recipients of the funds makes it a little bit easier for them to talk about it now that they've received it, and previously, it seemed like nobody wanted to tell anybody about it because no one wanted to have anybody sort of, you know, put their finger in the pie. So I'm hoping that now we have a good handful of spokespeople for this to encourage other businesses to apply. So I'm hopeful for that.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Goff.
Yeah. Just a quick update to for council. We, Mr. Dahl and I asked Mr. Urban to amend his motion. When I was drafting this resolution, I forgot to put in the public purpose clause that Mr. Dahl brought back to city council at the last council meeting. Since there's federal funding, there has to be a public purpose for the federal funding to be shared with, or not just federal funding, any funding shared with private businesses. So Mr. Urban has that amendment.
So are we ready for a motion?
Thank you. We are ready for motion, if you would please.
I move to approve Resolution 28-2020, a resolution mending the fiscal year 2020 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $250,000 for the purpose of funding Phase Two of the Business Stabilization Program and further amending such a resolution, it's a resolution, to say in a section two, the council hereby adopts by reference the findings of fact and declaration of public purpose set forth in Resolution 25 Series 2020.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand.
The motion has passed unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. That concludes the agenda for I'm sorry?
Just before you go on, may I? I know council pointed out how appreciative they were to get this program out, and I just want to mention some staff members that there were a lot of behind-the-scenes working on this. It was not easy getting that money out. And I specifically want to thank Carol Crawford, who certified all those business licenses. Mark Colvin, our finance manager, and Nick Lundquist, who got that money out, utilized those ACH forms, getting 99 W9 forms in. It was not easy when we pushed it out in two tranches, and it went extremely smooth after that. I would just need to publicly thank them for that. And for those of you that may be listening out there, I've been on weekly calls. The Jefferson County, part of the money they receive from the CARES Act will be utilized for a county grant program or utilizing our program as the basis for their program, and then all the other cities in Jefferson County either have a grant or a loan program. So we are working with businesses throughout Jefferson County. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And thank you very much, Mr. Art. And additional, Mr. Urban.
Thank you, and I just want to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Art for this effort as well, and all of his efforts to corral the cats that are at the task force and getting us all together, and appreciate all his help. Thank you.
This is a city that works together, and that's good to see. So let's go to our city managers' matters. Mr. Goff.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one update, important update for council and the public this evening. Denver Water is moving forward with another phase of their conduit 16 pipe replacement project. As you all remember, they they have replaced their conduit that went through the Clear Creek Crossing project on the west side of I-70. They tunneled board under I-70 and under the Applewood Shopping Center. But now they want, they need to continue that project, and the next phase is to take it across 32nd Avenue. They were scheduled to do this not until next year in 2021, but they want to take advantage of the decrease in in traffic in the area and set schools out at this time because this is going to require a closure of 32nd Avenue at Ward for about five weeks. So they have a fairly decent detour plan in place. So if you're going westbound on I-70 or 32nd Avenue, you'll you'll take Sims to the south down to 26 over to Youngfield, and you can come back up north if you'd like. If you're coming eastbound on 32nd, you would go north on 32nd up to 38th Avenue. So they will start, the closure will start on May 26th, and hopefully be done before the Fourth of July holiday. And then they'll come back in. This will just put a sleeve underneath 32nd Avenue, and then next year, they'll come in and actually put the the pipe in 32nd Avenue, and then it continues on down through Lakewood. But it's an important project, and they need to get it done. I think it's it's probably good timing to get it done before schools in because that's a lot of school traffic down in that area. So that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. We'll go to our city attorney, Mr. Dahl.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will start our elected officials' matters. I'll start with our clerk, Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing new to report.
Okay, thank you so much. I will invite our treasurer, Mr. Miller. I don't know if Mr. Miller is on the line, but I wanted to give him an opportunity. There, Mr. Miller, I'm happy to have you say something. Looks like he's not with us tonight. So I will move on to our our counselors and start with Ms. Nosler Beck.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Patrick, I just had a quick question about the 32nd Avenue closure. What kind of outreach is being done to notify the public in those surrounding neighborhoods?
Denver Water is is responsible for that, but we're working with them, of course, Sarah Spalding and our public information team. So we're trying to get the information out as much as possible, but Denver Water is required to, and they have been meeting with that neighborhood for the last couple of years, actually. So they're going to reach out to every business and resident that is impacted in that area, give them information. And I told staff we need to, we need to hold them to that. It can't just be a they can't just call some one person at Applewood Shopping Center and say, hey, spread the word. I want them talking to every business out there and making sure that they understand this. So Denver Water will actually be on at our study session next Monday, so we can ask them that question then, too.
Okay, wonderful. And then I do have one other item. I was Okay, wonderful. And then I do have one other item. Um, I was approached by a couple of business owners asking that we consider opening patios, uh, for people waiting on orders. Um, and then also, uh, open it up for either serving drinks, um, and while social distancing and adhering to, um, other public health orders, but to kind of ease things back into, um, reopening eventually and, um, you know, uh, people being outside. At least as far as the, the public health order, we haven't been able to, or we haven't been required to wear masks when we're outdoors and, and walking around. And, um, I don't know the exact science behind that. And if, you know, the warmer weather is going to bring, is going to kill this off a little bit, but, uh, I, I'd just like to take it into consideration and maybe have a discussion, open it up for a discussion with other council members and see, um, when we can start implementing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stites.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a really awesome conversation with a young man who was on our, uh, our call tonight or in our meeting tonight, uh, Corbin Travis, who's a boy scout who, um, gave his parents or his mom reached out to me via Facebook and, um, he needs to, he was working on getting a merit badge and, for civic process, all that stuff. And he gave me a call and we had an amazing conversation about masks and, and how kind of how the process works. And, um, it was really refreshing, really cool to see a young man, um, especially as a, as a middle schooler, um, he's a student Manning, went to Prospect Valley as, as a, as a younger kid. But it's really cool to see the fact that he did his research. He presented thoughtful arguments. He even argued with me, you know, like I said, thoughtfully and respectfully on, on some of my positions on it. And I was really proud of him and I would really love to see more adults, um, following our, our youth's example because I'm seeing that all over. These guys are looking, they're doing the research, they're following through. And I, I think more adults need to kind of follow that, that example. Ms. Hulteen has one more thing kind of related to what Ms. Dozeman and I are, was talking about, um, that we'd like to talk about as well, but I'll let her talk about it.
Very good. Thank you so much. Uh, we'll go to Ms. Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just had one quick thing. I want to al- always thank the city staff. I think they're just doing a great job through all of this. Uh, in particular, I just wanted to send a quick, uh, kudo to the park and rec department. Just things that are continuing, um, the online services that they're starting to push out this week. And, uh, and also just, uh, work, um, and allowing people to be socially distanced at the community gardens is really great. So thank you to all those people helping that happen.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as Mr. Stites mentioned, um, I'd like to propose we take a look at various modifications that we can make on a temporary basis that would allow businesses to maximize, um, the square footage that's available to them. When we heard from Dr. Johnson last week, the rollout of, um, the phase two and phase three of Safer at Home is really looking at the square footage that different businesses have that would determine how many customers that they can be serving or allowing in their business space at a time. Um, so I'd like us to take a look at what are some temporary actions that, that we can take or that, um, Patrick Goff can take under his, his authority that would allow businesses to occupy patio spaces, um, really like reallocate the space that, um, that they're currently using. We have a lot of warm months coming. And I'd like to get ahead of, um, you know, what are best practices that will allow people to feel safe patronizing our businesses because there's going to be adequate space, but, um, allowing our businesses to, to serve enough people for it to, to be worth their while. So I'd like to look at, um, both from the, the zoning and some of the business regulations. And then also with our parks and recreation, can we allow, um, like, you know, yoga studios, martial arts studios? Could they use our parks and recreation, um, instead of the constraints of their small stu- studio spaces? Could they serve more people in our parks? So I'd like us to, um, to take a look at that. So when the time comes, um, our businesses have a time to get ready and we're ready to, um, to step up. And if I have a second on that, that would be great.
Yeah, and that, I, Mr. Mayor, I could just say that's, we're, we're looking into all those already. I think Karen O'Donnell already has a plan for allowing, um, some businesses to use our parks for, um, things that you just mentioned, Ms. Hulteen. And, and, um, you, I think you may have all received or a letter from the Restaurant Association asking for some of these, um, modifications that suggesting that cities allow these modifications. And, um, we've been having those, those discussions already internally. And, um, I think the city clerk was on that, um, on the liquor piece too. So, um, we are moving forward with that. We can provide an update maybe next Monday at our study session.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Urban.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'd like to draw everybody's attention to the Facebook group, uh, that was created to allow us to adopt the Wheat Ridge High School seniors. And, uh, that page to date, I believe is adopted over 100 seniors from Wheat Ridge High School. And the concept is, is that to adopt a senior, you basically are committing to providing them with a gift basket of no more than $50 worth of gift cards or snacks or other, you know, uh, uh, items, just as a, and, um, a thank you and encouragement to those seniors to, uh, had, had to go through this time. And, uh, sort of a, a way for the community to get involved in encouraging these seniors as they go through this time. So, uh, encourage you all to join that and find a senior to adopt. And, uh, we have, I believe we have about 225 seniors at Wheat Ridge High School. And so we're almost halfway there and, uh, we have more coming every day. So just encourage us to do that. And, um, at our last meeting, we were talking about, uh, trail etiquette. And, uh, this past week I was on my bike along the Greenbelt and I saw Jesse out there doing a, a video segment on that very issue. So that really spoke to the nimbleness and the flexibility of our staff to really get after the issues. And I saw the end production. It was great. The, uh, the greatest line from the, the video that I saw was that it was a great reminder for all of us that there is no poop fairy in Wheat Ridge. So clean up after your dog. Thought that was great.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Urban. Um, I will go to Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, from the study session last week, I did find out that, um, the city-owned ash trees will receive preventative treatment this year. So that's a good thing to, for us to take care of the trees. We're Tree City USA. And also I've spoken to several people regarding, um, concern about the city council minutes and study session minutes that they're not on the website for quite a while. And so if a person isn't able to watch or listen to a meeting and they want to know what occurred, the information isn't getting on the Wheat Ridge website. So I wondered if any other council people have heard anything about that, that people are trying to see what's going on at the meetings because some people probably don't want to listen to a meeting for three hours. And so if they can just kind of see what the minutes are. And I was just kind of wondering like it, every one of our, um, council meetings, can't we have minutes that we approve, um, one way or another so that they can get on the website and people can see what's going on? Cause I looked on the website, I don't see any council meeting minutes since March 30th. So people are kind of missing out on what's going on in the city. So that's just, uh, a question.
Mr. Mayor, may, may I be recognized to respond to the council member? Uh, Mr., I'll recognize the clerk, Mr. Kirkpatrick.
The great question. Uh, the reason there are no new minutes is because until last week, we weren't sure how we were going to handle comments entered into Wheat Ridge Speaks. Now that we've agreed upon how to do that, all of those missing minutes will be available for the council to approve well before its next regular meeting on June 8th. It's entirely my decision to hold those back simply because we don't want to have to issue them and reissue them. Now that we have clear guidance, we'll get that all up to date. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Ms.?
And also, um, are we, we're going to have minutes for the study sessions also?
Yes.
That'll go in there. So then, um, like at June 8th, then we're going to be approving like seven or eight um, minutes of meetings?
Mr. Kirkpatrick, your, uh, your microphone is muted.
I'm trying to unmute it and the system didn't respond. Sorry about that. I don't know if it's seven or eight. I, it's five or six, but yes. And if you would like to spread those out or something, we can obviously do that. And, and again, I apologize for the delay. It just seemed like it made more sense to do it once and do it well than to do it fast.
Yeah. So then after that, there'll be more, uh, on the website. Yeah. Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, we'll go to Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to say also, um, thank you so much to all of our staff. And, you know, we have, uh, staff that are, um, on the meeting that are in the background, you know, muting and unmuting, you know, and, and following along with the meeting to make sure that it goes well. Um, I also just wanted to point out that there are not a lot of cities that have, um, come as far as we have, as far as, um, being able to have the opportunities that our citizens have to be engaged and, and be involved in our, um, meetings. And so I'm super proud of, um, our staff to pull that together. It was, you know, it's been the desire for city council for a long time and they really, really have been hustling and, and getting that done. Also want to say thanks to our community. Um, we are a small, mighty and, um, kind and proud community. And it's nice to see everybody come together to help people out and things like the, adopt the seniors. And, um, you know, when I know when people say, you know, hey, I, I have a need, there's more than one person who's willing to jump in and, and help them with that. So just want to say thank you to our community and to, um, keep being well and keep being safe.
Thank you very much. That's going to just about conclude our meeting. I've got a couple of things. I would like to thank, um, Lindsey Reinhardt and Susan Anderson to joining us this evening to talk about mental health. I think we, we, we do best for our community when we provide services that, that help people. So I appreciate them being here. Uh, thanks also to Chief Murtha and his, uh, Public Safety Officer, his, uh, his police department. I'm, I'm very proud of the work that they do. Uh, they've, uh, they've certainly gone the extra mile in, uh, in this emergency to try to provide good public service. And I, I want to thank them and hope they stay safe. Uh, always thank our staff. We've got people behind the scenes that, that work very hard under, under trying circumstances. And I think we're turning out a great product. I appreciate also all of our elected officials who were, who were, who are joining us in, uh, in making that happen. Uh, I want to do a shout out to the, uh, the, the board that has helped us with the business stabilization grants, Mr. Art, Mr. Urban and their co- their cohorts on that committee. And the, you're right, our city is, uh, is small enough and cares enough about one another to be very nimble and be able to work, uh, on a, on a rapid pace to get this done. And I think that, uh, shows the strength of our community working together. Uh, I want to, I want to end tonight and, uh, and thank our graduates, our graduates from kindergarten through, uh, through high school and college. If you've, uh, if you've made it to get your, to graduation, you've done very well. And I think we should all be proud of them. Uh, it's, it's really a shame that, that this is, that this has happened during their graduation year. You know, but those are the breaks. You've got a long life. You've got a lot of challenges and great things ahead of you. Please go out there and make this world a better place. So with that, if there's no business to come before the council, we will stand adjourned with all my thanks. Thank you all.